It is 5:00 PM. We'll call the special meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Waldridge? Commissioner Tippett?
Here.
Commissioner Wisman?
Present.
Commissioner Sauer?
Present.
Mayor May?
I'm here.
I think Commissioner Waldridge is frozen right now. She's on her phone, I think.
Oh, okay.
Having connection issues, so.
Oh, okay. Got it. All right. Multiple monitors here. It looks like, did we have any citizen comments tonight?
We had just one, Mayor.
Okay. You have it?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to go ahead?
That's fine, sure. Please.
Okay.
Patricia's on, but I didn't have my mic on.
There she is, okay. Okay, thanks, bye. Okay, the first comment that we have, or the only comment that we have tonight, is from Mike Clark. And he says, "At a joint city commission fiscal court meeting, the developer said that the first thing he will do is tear down the YMCA facility and use it for a staging area for developing the parcels. He did not disclose a date by which a new YMCA would be built. So my question has three elements. Is it really necessary to tear down the YMCA and use it as a staging area? Or is that just a convenience for the developer? When will a new YMCA be built? In the meantime, would the YMC organization be willing to keep the existing facility open if the developer can accommodate that? Thanks. Mike Clark."
Mayor? Mayor?
One second, sorry, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner Tippett.
I will refer the Commission to the memo sent to us from the interim City Manager, Mr. Russell. City Manager states on 12/9/2020 and addresses all of those questions that were posed in the citizens' comments. And I'm sure Mr. Russell will be able to forward that information to any citizen who wants it.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Tippett, and thank you, Mr. Clark, for always staying involved in the community. We'll get those answers to Mr. Clark. The, that was the last citizen comment? Okay. So, next item is discussion items. The first one is the draft YMCA contract. I'll call on City Manager Russell for that, please.
Thank you, sir. After reviewing the draft document that came from Ms. Ross to the YMCA and the YMCA contacting us and saying that they needed a document showing that we were supporting that process for them to raise money to build a new Y, the only thing that I saw that was not in there was anything that protected is not the right word, but anything that protected us from making that donation should they decide to downscale or downsize that YMCA or build a smaller facility or something like that. And who knows what would happen these days with fundraising assets and all other things with COVID going on. I was just afraid that perhaps some way, shape, or form, we would get to a Y that was only going to cost $5 million and we would be, we would be funding half of that, which the original program that was given to you all that showed they would build a 30,000 square foot facility at roughly $9.5 billion. I know we can't control the construction price of that, but certainly we can control the square footage that we want to see. We want to see a first-class facility here in the city and the same-sized facility or larger or better than what we had now. So I think just, that was just a thought and afterthought that Ms. Ross and I discussed is that what if they decide to only build a 20,000 square foot facility? Would we be comfortable with that? And we, I just thought that the easiest way to go is if they reduce their footprint, then maybe we should consider reducing our pledge amount there. We're not bound in stone by anything, any way, shape, or form. I just wanted to point that out to you all that it's a consideration that in that original document, I don't think we had very much protection in there to Ms. Ross other than a few dates that they had to have things done by or complied by or things of that nature.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Mayor?
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes, so with this, you know, I've had a little bit of concern in regards to this ever since we did say something, you know, in regards and we, and I believe it was, we had the presentation of the YMCA, which was well-done, very impressive. As I've shared with Tommy, and he shared a little bit of what I've shared with him and Laura as well. You know, I just don't, this does not sit well with me. I understand they're wanting to move forward with fundraising. I get why they need a letter from us and things of that nature. But really, when I look at all of it, Mayor, it's, you know, I feel like there needs to be another discussion before, you know, we come back. I know tonight is just a discussion, but I think this really needs to move over into the next commission as I think there needs to be some more discussion with YMCA on what they're really going to do versus us sitting around talking about a number until we know what they're going to do. As I've shared with Tommy, and he sort of shared some of what I've shared with him. And Laura, I just think the 2.5 million is a ridiculous amount of money now when we don't know what they're going to give us. And Frankfurt and our citizens of Frankfurt deserve a YMCA that has been built in Lexington and Louisville. And for them to start out at a 30,000 square foot facility, and now it has supposedly diminished in size, that's something that we need to look at and look thoroughly in because as far as I'm concerned, you know, even if we can get a new YMCA, the size of that YMCA, Mayor, actually matters to Frankfurt. We are looking and hoping to, you know, grow Frankfurt in the next four, 10 years. And so in order to build a YMCA, we really need to look in what we're building this YMCA for. And it's not just for our city now, but it's also for that growth that we're looking to have hopefully in the next few years. And if they come in and build a very small YMCA on a prominent piece of property, I mean, it's great to have a new YMCA, but if we're still going to have a pool that's going to be the size of someone's bathtub and we're going to be just bobbling in, it really doesn't make sense because that's not what Frankfurt needs. Frankfurt needs state-of-the-art. We need to give our residents state-of-the-art, so our quality of life for them to continue to working out for our kids, for the community. It needs to be incentives for our community. It needs to bring incentives for people and businesses to want to come in Frankfurt. And if it's not going to be an incentive held as far as an Olympic-sized pool or a large facility, truly, we need to look at other arrangements. As I've talked with Sean Pickens, Director Pickens, and you know, possibly, you know, if the YMCA isn't giving us what we need for the money we're willing to throw out, that maybe we need to look at taking that 2.5 million and maybe looking at bonding it for a few years and building our own facility to where we do know that we will have what Frankfurt needs and what Frankfurt deserves. So I think this is something that we should not be making decisions on so quickly now. I think we do need to have a discussion with the community involved once again and the YMCA so we know what they're wanting to build and where they're wanting to go. Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking on the screen to see if they have, is there a hand up? Lots of hands. I'm not sure who had their hand up first. Commissioner Wisman? Did you have your hand up a second ago, then Commissioner Sauer?
I think Ms. Ross did as well. Perhaps Ms. Ross and Mr. Russell first. They may have some more information for us.
Absolutely.
Are you wanting to go first? Do you want to go?
It's fine. It's fine. I was just going to add one thing. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead. City Attorney.
So basically, we wanted some direction from you all on this as well because the 2.5 million is what you all did direct originally, and so this would be a change from that. So we certainly don't want to include that in any sort of agreement without making sure that you all are okay with that provision.
Okay, Mr. Russell?
I was just going to say, Mayor, I've had a couple, I have had a couple of conversations with YMCA, and they have not indicated to me that they could not meet the project. Now, it's just because there wasn't anything in that contract if it deviated from that, that I'm bringing this forward. I fully support the YMCA, and I hope they, they are able to do everything that they presented at that meeting so we can move forward with a state-of-the-art YMCA. I was just doing that to kind of CYA us just in case something happened along those lines. Thank you.
That's much appreciated. We do appreciate your, your all's work on that. Commissioner Wisman, Commissioner Sauer, then Commissioner Tippett.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Russell, thank you. And I think this shows your, your experience and due diligence in helping us review because you are right. You know, there are rumors abounding about, about this, but I was going to ask you specifically, and you've already answered, has the Y brought us an alternative proposal yet? And I don't believe they have. I don't think they've given us any concrete evidence that they intend to change drastically in any way their original proposal. You know, what, what Commissioner Waldridge has reviewed so thoroughly there is exactly what we discussed last year when we lent our support to this project, a pledge of, of a commitment to this project to see a new facility built in downtown that will benefit everyone, that will be sizable and, and of a great benefit to our community. And I think our pledge still holds true. I completely agree with your, your edits that we should have some flexibility as, as was indicated when we made a pledge that if the plan changed in any manner, it was to come back to us to review and make sure that we were still in, in support of the project, particularly given the, the nature of the developments that, that is still in flux to a degree for, for downtown here that, that might have some implications that are yet unseen. Particularly, I imagine, given the, the year that we've had with this pandemic, the construction dates that were initially devised, I know have been drastically altered and may still impact the project yet. But for, for just a discussion tonight, I think this is a good change to, to include some of the language you've added here. Pandemic or health crisis into the general scope of, of delay for the contract that would be acceptable. And I think it makes very clear that if, if the project does alter in some way, that we, we will review it. There is certainly merit that if the Y decides for whatever reason not to construct a new facility, that we can consider our own site and use that money to, to an indoor facility that our community's wanted so much. And maybe there's still something to be said about that. But it will be up to the next commission to, to further vet this project, obviously. So, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Sauer? Oh, you're still muted, Commissioner.
Mike, John.
Thank you, thank you. I don't have a copy of the original contract or proposal, I should say, I guess. Do we, do we know the, the number of square feet the facility is supposed to be? No. I see Laura shaking her head. No. Okay, I like short answers, Laura. I love them. And we don't have an exact location other than they're going to be in parcel B or C. Is that correct? Okay. And do we know a pool size that has been mentioned? No. Well, then I think we do have some concerns. I'm interested, I guess, in looking at the proposal, Tommy. I'm sorry, I don't have that, that you offer. So I'll be kind of impartial to the debate right now.
This is a staff question. Is that in attachment number one? WS1 should have that in there, Commissioner Sauer.
I've got three and four, but no one or two.
Okay.
It's been attached to the one, Commissioner.
Can, we can forward that real quick, I think. Please.
John, it's a two-part packet, right? It has a contractual language edits and then a, the original.
Okay, I will take a look at that.
Design.
Thank you.
And the changes that City Manager and City Attorney worked on should be in different color in that attachment. At least it is on mine.
Okay. We're going to continue this discussion, I guess. So I'll look at that and get back with you.
Okay. Commissioner Tippett?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I remember the February 20th meeting, I believe that's the correct date, when that presentation was given to us. And I remember the spirit of the board, of our board, it was, it was near unanimity that we expressed to the, to the folks who were, who were asking us for the 2.5 million dollars that we wanted a first-class facility. It was just no doubt that that was the will of this board. And I'm not sure what, I mean, I'm not an expert on that, but we don't want to spend 2.5 million dollars and disappoint the community. Okay? That's just, I mean, I know I'm on my way out, but I, I feel like I'm kind of going to, you know, help plant the seed with this thing. So I, I would like for this current board to make sure that we express the will, which I think is unanimous for all of us. And I, and I'm pretty sure that Commissioner Waldridge and I both made the point that we wanted a nice-sized swimming pool. And I said something to the effect of an Olympic pool. And what they said to me was that many YMCA's do not have Olympic pools, but there would be, there would be a nice-sized pool there. And I just think that's, if we can't have that, if we can't have some assurances of that, then, you know, I don't think we're bound to give the 2.5 million dollars. That's just my opinion. So if staff can communicate with the folks who are wanting to do the fundraising and build the YMCA, and if they can give us assurances, and the next commission, I'm sure they're going to want the same assurances that we have, that we want, that it's a first-class facility, then full steam ahead. But we just, we're just not, I mean, I would not be, what little time I have left, I, I would not be for anything that would disappoint the community. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I think that was a clear consensus last, earlier when we, we made that commitment to them. And I think we all want to see that. So I think they said versus Olympic-sized, I don't consider Olympic-sized, but a lot of them are like 20, 25 meters or 25 yards. Commissioner Sauer? Oh, still muted.
As you might remember, Mayor, and Tommy might remember, I was a longtime swimmer in Frankfurt. And swam in high school as well as, actually, Western Kentucky University for a year. And a, an Olympic-sized pool is, is a very large pool. It's, it's Juniper Hill size. And I think we could do well with half that size. I really do. And have no complaints from anybody. Thank you.
If y'all remember, I can't remember the lady's name, but she, I won't say test that, but gave remarks at the commission meeting that that was pretty standard for most of the swim teams, that, that they do swim in the 25-meter or 25-yard pool. I can't remember if it's 25 yards or 25 meters. One of those six. All right, so.
Mayor, staff is looking for a, a move or a motion to approve this for a tentative contract with the Y tonight. Is, there is some need for this to move forward for the fundraising efforts?
City Attorney?
We don't actually need any sort of vote. We just want to make sure we're headed in the right direction. And if you all were uncomfortable with that provision in any way or any of the agreement, that you would let us know tonight before we keep going.
Any objection to the direction we're going?
No, I think it looks good.
Mayor? I've had a chance to review it, you know, and, and it's a 30,000 square foot facility, and it looks good to me to go.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next item. Item number two, the alcohol fee waiver. I don't know if City Manager and City Attorney have been working on this?
I think Ms. Alicia is on here, our finance director also. This was one of the things that came about, I think, from the governor's office that they were willing to waiver, to waive some of the alcohol fees statewide to try to help out some of the bars and restaurants that sold alcohol. As far as the city of Frankfurt goes, we have already had about 80, I don't know the exact number, 80% of our bars and restaurants have already paid their fees, and there is a certain number that have not. To, to not create an accounting nightmare if we chose to do this. And I think the numbers of dollars are like $45,000 or something like that that we collect in those numbers. To, in order not to create a, an accounting nightmare for Ms. Boyd and her staff, perhaps we consider everybody that is paid this year, we waive them for next year. And those that have not paid this year, they just got lucky and got their fee waived until next year. We'll have to ask Ms. Alicia to see what she thinks, if you don't mind, Mayor. But that's conversations we've had.
No, thanks. At least, Ms. Boyd, we had a conversation, was it last week? I think. She explained to me pretty much the situation, so we'll let her explain to the full board.
Well, it's basically what Tommy said, except that we have approximately 100 businesses, several of which are convenience stores, gas stations, those types of businesses as well. And of the 100 or so that we provide an alcohol fee to, it can range anywhere from $50 up to $1,250 for a, a certain venue. And so of those 100, we've actually already had, as of last count, 83 that have paid. So in following suit with, I think, what the state had recommended. And of course, with the state, the, the letter basically talks about waivers for bars, restaurants, and related licenses. So examples that would not qualify for the state would be liquor stores and like, say, your grocery stores like Kroger and Walmart, or convenience stores, gas stations, because none of those places were ever asked to shut down at all. So basically, the state's waiving for bars, restaurants, and related licenses. And I believe last count, I did, I did a count last week, there were only six restaurants that had not paid their alcohol fee. So they're part of the 13 or so that haven't paid at all. So that was kind of what I was filling the mayor and Tom and the city manager in on. We collect about $46,000 or so in alcohol fees. And the state is waiving, and I believe the state is going to do roughly the same type of thing. I'm looking at the letter. Licenses who paid renewal fees in 2020 will not pay in 2021. Licenses who have not paid renewal fees for 2020 will not be required to renew until 2021. So it's, it's what the city manager has recommended as well. That we either waive this year or next year, depending on if they've already paid. And as I've stated, there's not, I, I can't recall the exact amount of restaurants and bars, but there's 100 businesses in total. But a majority of those were not, had not been required to shut down at all. So at this point, it's, you know, just whatever the commission would like to do based on the information that the city manager and I've provided. But regardless, I would like to see a waiver of fees and not being asked to give any refunds back if that's, if, if that's truly one of the things I'd really appreciate, that would be it. So, thank you.
All right. Any commissioners? Commissioner Wisman?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just wondering, Laura, if you could speak to the legality of, of waiving, you know, a fee for a certain class. I brought up similar thing at our last meeting about business license fees and sort of thinking about all these fees that could help particularly our small businesses and those restaurants and bars in town. Do we have the ability to exempt a certain class as the state is doing as a, as a municipality?
I believe we do, as long as we're uniform within our treatment of that class.
Do you have anything worked up to that effect yet that would give us an idea of how many businesses would qualify for that class? Or do you, Ms. Boyd?
No, I don't think so. Mr. Wisman, I don't, I, I looked at it last week, and I apologize. I haven't looked at my spreadsheet since. I can, I can certainly get information out to you, to the commission. But as I recall, there were a lot of convenience stores and gas stations. You know, those types of facilities were on there. I don't, I'm sure there were several restaurants as well, but I can't put a, an exact number on it. I might, could come, I might pull up the, I'm actually in my office. I'm happy to pull the spreadsheet up and give you guys that total while you continue to talk, if, if you'd like for me to do that. I'm happy to do that. The, the number of restaurants?
Sure, if you can give us some indication of maybe the indication of what impact that, that value might be. I, I think it's a very worthy endeavor, as I said at our last meeting, about business licenses and, and all of these fees, anything that we can waive for the year or provide grant funding in lieu of a waiver. I think it's, you know, important and impressed upon us to do so. Particularly coming out of this, this reopening today of our bars and restaurants that have been closed for two weeks. I, I know there are some in town that are not going to survive without some significant help from the city. And I, I think that hurts us multifold over, not just the loss in, in tax revenue, but the loss of jobs and the loss of attractive amenities to our community that, that promotes tourism and, and local quality of life and so on. I, I think it's really critical for us to, to find all of these avenues that we possibly can to, to support our local businesses. And Ms. Ross, if you think you can create something for us to speak to that fact that we can legally comply exempting certain businesses over others, could we add that to our next agenda for next Monday? Or do we? I would support it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Waldridge. Head of Handel.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this back up. As, as we stated, it was brought up a few minutes ago when the governor actually did it for the state. And I know that I was in your office and we discussed that. And I'm glad to see that we're now down to six businesses. I think at the time, we had a conversation, I think there was 10. So that's good to say that there are still businesses willing to take care of their financial needs, so that, that's a positive. But I'm glad that we are moving forward with this after our discussion. I'm glad to see that it's finally back on the agenda for us to take, to take action. And I agree with Mr. Wisman that, you know, together, all of these fees hopefully could add up and give a break to some of our businesses. And would like to see what else has transpired between KCBC, DFI, and all of those for our communities and businesses here, for the businesses here, and what they've decided. and businesses here, for the businesses here, and what they've decided that maybe our commission can help them with financially. And if this is a way to go, since it ranges from fifty-two, I think you said fifteen hundred or twenty-five hundred, you know, that truly may help out several. And, you know, and continue to hopefully keep them above ground and, and maybe even add that to some of the business checks that went out this week to help them toward the end of the week. So I just want to say thank you for staying on that. Thank you for working on this and getting those numbers. But it is good to see that that number changed from ten to six. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wissman, it's roughly forty restaurants and bars on our list of one hundred that have an alcohol and alcohol license that they need to pay for. So forty percent or so of the total.
Ms. Boyd, do you have an average fee structure for each, for that range of businesses that we charge? I know some of those will be catering venues and, and some rare event venues versus restaurants and bars.
Right. Oh, I probably, hang on. You got me going back to middle school math here. Let's see.
Just so we have an idea of budget impact?
Uh, roughly around the average for all forty of those, you're looking at roughly around seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollars. Average. Some, as I stated, are seventy-five dollars, some are five seventy-five, some are eight seventy-five. I'm just looking at my list here. Some are eleven twenty-five. We've got one that's twelve hundred and fifty, so they, they range, but it's roughly about seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty dollar average per entity for those forty or so.
Well, just obviously that, that is, that's potential payroll for a week or two weeks or, or an entire new inventory to be, to get back on their feet. So for some of these businesses, obviously not for others, it's, it's not going to be a great impact, but I, I think that's very worthy. Although I, I wonder, even for those that have already paid their fee, I, I know a few of those might be a struggle that we might consider a refund situation. I don't know if we could ask maybe Mrs. Hall to reach out to some of the businesses on our behalf and, and ask what would be the most impactful, a waiver for next year's fee or, or cash now. I, I imagine, even though it might be an accounting nightmare, but I, I imagine a refund might be more impactful for some of those businesses.
Uh, well, and I don't have the number of businesses in front of me as far, well, I know the number, but the actual business list themselves. But one thing to consider is whether all of those applied for one of those small business grants, we'd have to look into that as well, if, if that's, if I understood you correctly on, on that front, or I think Commissioner Waldridge may have mentioned that. So that's definitely something to consider too, so.
Okay, anyone else have their hand up? Alright, thank you all. Next item, the first reading of ordinance, and would ask the solicitor to read item number three by title, then somebody on like please.
An ordinance amending ordinance number twelve, twenty twenty series appropriating the revenue to be received by the city of Frankfurt for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. This ordinance amends ordinance number twelve, twenty twenty series appropriating the revenue to be received by the city for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one by adding the following expenditures. General fund, historical preservation officer salary forty-three thousand, Frankfurt Independent Schools seventy-two thousand, Rosum one hundred thousand, executive order boxcar twenty-five thousand, executive order emergency shelter renovation commitment to the Simon House, a hundred thousand, purchase of property at two twenty-one West Second Street, three hundred and ninety thousand, contribution to the Franklin County Humane Society, one million, contribution to the Senior Citizen Center, twenty-five thousand, executive order. Capital Improvement Fund, five thirty, additional expense for stage thirty thousand, transit van forty-seven thousand four hundred, transit camera system forty-one thousand seven hundred, Ford Hill Park Fund, five twenty, purchase of acreage at Mural Street, fifteen thousand, sewer fund three hundred, purchase of property at six hundred Schinkle Lane, five hundred and fifty thousand, purchase of dump truck, ninety-nine thousand nine hundred. And by adding the following revenue, Capital Improvement Fund, five thirty, transit van reimbursement, forty-seven thousand four hundred, transit camera system reimbursement, forty-one thousand seven hundred.
Alright, thank you. Headed first reading?
Mayor, I have a question on, on that one. Um, just Tommy or Mr. Russell, Ms. Ross, the contribution to the Humane Society, we directed that about a year ago. I thought we'd already made a budget amendment. Was that not done before? We had directed that to be done and that, it seemed to have never happened. I just thought I'd point that out. Thank you.
Mr. Wissman, if they're shaking their head, then they've been sitting in those chairs longer than I've been sitting in this one, sir.
And actually, back in February, I think, was when you decided for this contribution to be made. But I have not seen, did not see any indication through budget amendment. That was before my time. So I thought in the interest of at least getting in on the budget, that this would be the best route to take. I did not see it anywhere in any kind of budget amendment. And I know it wasn't in the original budget passed back in June either, so.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. I believe there was a, a will of maybe some former staff that, that not go through in that manner. So even though we directed it, I, I think it was important that that was a good catch and thank you for adding that in in this manner.
Commissioner Sauer? Some muted, sir.
After completing discussion of this matter, mayor could ask for a recess for about five minutes?
Absolutely. Motion back Commissioner Sauer for recess. Is there a second? Commissioner Waldridge, are you seconding? Okay.
Sorry, I had discussion. I thought he said after this, sorry.
Did you?
I said after this, after discussion of this particular item, I need a recess of about five minutes.
Okay.
Is the first reading completed, Mayor?
We did the first reading, yeah.
So I'll second, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Alright.
It's first reading.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I had discussion. I'm sorry, I was getting ready to say something.
Okay, okay, okay.
Alright, we got a motion for recess, you know, motion in the second for five minutes.
Question, Mayor? Question?
Absolutely.
Uh, did Commissioner Walters just indicate that she wanted to have more discussion about the first reading? Is that what I heard her say?
Correct.
So we'll pick that up when we come back after the recess. Is that correct? Yes.
Alright, thank you all. We'll come back at five forty-two.
Thank you.
It is five forty-two. I'll call a meeting back to order from recess. All members are present. So we'll continue item number three. Commissioner Waldridge, I believe you had comments or questions?
There?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So I had just a couple of things. So for number one, under the general fund, it says a hundred thousand dollars to Rosum. And I, I'm assuming some of the information that I saw is that's going to go to Rosum to help pay for electric bills for the Frankfurt Plant Board issue. And I was just wondering, with that money, like, I'm, you know, I'm all for trying to help the community out where they need help and paying bills. But I also definitely want to use, you know, free money as well before we start handing money out of our general. So with that being said, is there a process that Rosum is going to go through to make sure that everyone applies for money through them, have already applied for the free governor's money before they apply for the city's money? Therefore, we're just not throwing out money. If these people can get free money through the governor's free money that he has thrown out there, I just think that there needs to be something set up with to say that they've applied for that portion of money, regardless if it was a portion that was paid or if they were rejected, and then they can bring that to Rosum then to get assistance through the one hundred thousand. I just want to make sure that our money is being used appropriately and that we're trying to get the most for our money. And it would just be pointless if these people are not applying for the first round of money versus just going straight to some of the city money. So that was one of my comments on that one. And, and also with the thirty thousand dollars for underneath the capital improvement, which I'm not sure why it's a capital improvement, because it didn't need to be approved. But i- is the thirty thousand, is that paying for the backdrop that, is that the backdrop and some more additions onto the stage that we still haven't used? Can we have clarity on that? Because I did not see clarity in that, but maybe again, I've looked over it, sort of like Sauer said, he had looked over his YMCA. Maybe I overlooked that. What is that thirty thousand broken down? And maybe I could ask Ms. Boyd on what that is.
So when, when we did the original budget, we budgeted and I, I actually used what I saw as being budgeted in February of twenty twenty prior to me getting here, of course. And it was a, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Well, the stage ended up costing a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So I, and we paid for it in this fiscal year. So it was budgeted at a hundred and twenty-five and came in a little more than that. So I was just simply trying to clean the budget up by adding that amount to it for an approval as a budget amendment.
Okay. And so with that, Ms. Boyd, could you let me know why, what paperwork you have that says that we went from one twenty-five to one fifty-five when we did a budget of one twenty-five? And that was actually giving us a little bit of leeway, just in case we went over for that budget and why we went over the, the leeway budget that we set. Now we're at one fifty-five. Could you tell me what that, what that includes and why we went so far over and that not coming back through or what that entails?
Well, Commissioner Waldridge, I, I actually had not looked at that invoice in a while. And to be quite honest with you, I, I can't, I can't answer that. I just know that when we paid for it, it was one hundred, roughly a hundred and fifty-five thousand. As I stated, I was just trying to get the budget updated for it. So, but I mean, I'm happy to get the information to the commission with a copy of the invoice, whatever you may need. I can do that. But, but as I stated, I was just simply trying to clean the, you know, get the budget amendment
Right.
And before you, before the commission that's currently here leaves. And of course, you're staying, but I was just trying to get everything kind of squared away before, before the guys were all out, gone.
No, that's okay. Thank you. And I would, could you please send that out to the commission? The invoice and who signed off on the invoice for that to increase from one twenty-five to one fifty-five? That would be great, because I'd like to know what that was and who signed off on that to, to approve that all the way to one fifty-five. That's an outrageous number for a stage. And, and then my other.
It's tomorrow, okay, for that? Can I say that?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, that's fine. Just something to get out so we know where taxpayers' dollars are going. I think that was my, my two questions for, for that. So, which was the Rosum, the order of Rosum and the stage. So, thank you.
I think I can answer part of that. I think initially when staff gave us a, a testament on the stage, it was a sixteen by twenty-four instead of twenty-four by thirty-two. Then we voted on.
Correct. It was a little bit larger, but that actually came in under the one twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken. This is extra. But I'll, I'll wait for the invoice to come through. Thank you.
My apologies for not knowing all that detail with it, but I'll get the invoices to you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Anyone else on this item? Commissioner Sauer?
I, I don't have any problem with Rosum. Commissioner Waldridge said electric, electric bills. And, and I don't think it specifies only electric bills. It, I think usually when you go to Rosum, you're asking for a varied amount of money for different problems and it's really a, a program for the poor. And so I, and knowing, knowing Ms. Ransell, some of you old timers, maybe Scott might remember Ms. Ransell, I'm sure. And she was a real stickler and I'm, I'm not on the board or a member of Rosum or whatever. But I used to be involved with Rosum and they keep a card file on everybody and they check everything about everybody. So no one can get away with gaming the system. She was a real stickler and I know this group that helps the poor likewise is a real stickler for what they, what they give out and check everybody thoroughly.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, city manager?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, just to comment on the, on the Rosum thing. It started out as actually a request from Frankfurt Plant Board for some of their help because they have more than fifteen hundred customers in arrears that are going to be in arrears and they're going to start shut offs January the fourth, cutoffs for electric. We discussed this with them and Ms. Ross. We had a conversation with Rosum on the individual needs for the community because we are, we are doing a lot for small businesses and there's going to be the need for individuals out there. So I don't have to worry about another emergency shelter opening up. Rosum vets the process, just like Commissioner Sauer said extremely well. And this would go also if they qualify for a portion of rent or a down payment to keep them in their apartment or their house and for Columbia Gas for heat. So it's life-saving measures that all of this is directed to. We were going to do fifty and fifty at one time, but I was afraid that if we got in the middle of that, that we would, they would need the monies faster than we could get it to them. So I asked for the other, for it to be put together to do a hundred thousand. They have reviewed an MOA and we've got it back in sign. They're going to present us quarterly reports. I think, Ms. Ross, was that right? And as Commissioner Waldridge, as far as individuals applying to the state for their assistance, I don't know that there's any way that we can tell that for sure. But again, knowing Cindy Owens, who's the executive director, they, they vet their, their applications extremely well. And I, I had no hesitation whatsoever about recommending that money to them because it will go to everybody inside of Frankfurt proper to keep it inside the city limits, which is what I was trying to do.
And.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes, and thank you for that. And, and, you know, I guess maybe a copy of the MOA will come out to us. I, I didn't have that in any of my paperwork, any of that. So that would have helped clear that up to see that it wasn't just for Frankfurt Plant Board, which I was assuming it was for Frankfurt Plant Board, as I've had a couple of conversations. And I'm all for helping the community. It wasn't about people really trying to beat the system. It was just, my comment is that I would hope that we would have, but you said, Bill, that, that, you know, hey, apply for the federal money through the governor first and then we'll help you after just trying to use that money. So our money could go a little bit further or what have you. And that, that's what I was just trying to make sure that our money was still being used in our community, which is a good thing, but at the same time, just making sure they were applying for that state money as well. So I have no issues with that. I just was wondering if that's what we were doing. But once you get the MOA and I get that to read and it not just say Rosum a hundred thousand dollars, I would be able to understand that. Thank you.
Commissioner Wissman and Commissioner Sauer, I'm not sure I've gotten it.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Mr. Russell. You know, there's no one more versed in our, on our city staff than he is about trying to meet the need of the community during this pandemic. And we, we had a discussion about Rosum and what might be the best avenue. And unfortunately, we are limited on, on response avenues to meet the need. But I think this is going to, to go well towards the need. Obviously, the, the funding that was available was set to expire, I believe, a couple of days ago initially. That has been extended to the thirty-first of the month. Mr. Russell, could you verify for me?
Maybe the thirtieth. I don't remember the exact date now, Commissioner.
What is that funding pot, just for informative sake?
What's the question, sir?
What is that funding through for, for information's sake for the, the public?
From the governor's office for the, from the state or for ours?
For the state.
Oh, I don't know what the, I don't remember what the exact. Oh, I don't know what the, I don't remember what the exact attachments to it, to be honest with you. Wish, I've read so many of those things.
Yeah, just for, for conversational sake that, you know, that there is a couple of assistance pots of money out there at the moment for folks to stay in their homes and retain their heat. This is critical life-saving efforts on, on our behalf. And I think $100,000 is, should just probably be a starting point for what I am afraid is coming as, as people are going to be struggling through the winter and continuing to, to have issues with, with employment closing down, businesses not surviving. And what's going to come out of that. So I have full faith in Mr. Russell in directing the commission with the amount of funds that are needed to, to meet that need. So just wanted to thank you, Tommy, for, for continually being at the forefront of that for us.
Commissioner Sauer?
Mr., Mr. Russell is old enough to remember the Exxon Valdez, who had the largest oil spill in the history of the world up there in Alaska. And so this fund, La Heep, was developed after that and they made Exxon pay for their mail, for their mess on the environment. And so it's trickled down from the feds to the state, to the local. And so I think that's what Patricia was talking about is the Exxon Valdez and La Heep is the program. And they never have enough money. They never have enough money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question on that? Not, item number four, after solicitorry, just by title and summary on the release, which is frustrating.
An ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 37.02, relating to personnel definitions. This ordinance amends the definition of seasonal employee in Section 37.02 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to subdivide seasonal employees into two categories. Seasonal one, employees who work nine or less months in a fiscal year and less than 1,500 hours in a calendar year and do not otherwise qualify as seasonal two. And seasonal two, employees with three or more consecutive years of service who are in positions that department head has determined to require specialized training and/or certifications.
All right, thank you. Any questions on this item?
Yeah, I'll just, just ask, Ms. Ross, what was the term for the three years? This, this says that an employee has to be employed with us for three years before meeting that seasonal two description? Or is this a, when a position is identified, a part-time position is set up, that it's going to be a permanent more than three years? Is there a difference between the two there?
Is the three-year, I, I think actually our inter-homes city manager would like to answer that. He seems to be quite interested over there.
Commissioner Whisman, to be honest with you, I just figured that was enough time. If somebody came back to work for the city, was saving us benefits in a seasonal capacity, that we should reward them. And it's a small tuck and most of those people, and we hire, oh, golly, several hundred seasonal workers every year. And only about 25 to 30 of those seasonal workers are gonna, are gonna fit into this tier two category. So for those that come back to work for us every year and save us money and benefits and learning the job and things of that nature, most of those guys make $10 an hour, $12 an hour. It's a small, it's a small amount of money. Just as for us to show a little bit of appreciation to them, to count them into system, to getting a COLA raise, as far as I was concerned. Park staff and those guys that work downtown, they do a phenomenal job, a phenomenal job of making downtown look nice. And I know everybody is, has witnessed that. So that's, that's just was my thinking on that in the three years is, I figured if somebody came back after the third year, they were doing a very good job. I know if I was a director and they weren't cutting the mustard, then I wouldn't bring them back after that. But if they keep coming back to work and are doing the job, the, the director is okay with. And I'm all for showing them a little bit of appreciation because right now only part-time workers are, are eligible for COLA raises.
Mr. Russell, I would completely agree. I, I know, you know, we have a lot of very talented people and specifically in Frankfurt. I think in the, going into the future, we're probably going to need to use that talent on a part-time basis to fill positions more, just to keep that critical skill level here. The, the city museum is a great example of the, the tremendous talent that, that comes and works for us part-time, but still want to have their foot into retirement and, and things as well. But my question was more, should we maybe identify that, that someone that's hired on at the beginning that is intended to stay for a period of three or more years from the, from the initial hire should also be considered as, but you're saying that you, you wanted it after a three-year term. I, I think either is fine, but my thought was just that if we have some fantastic talent that's coming on staff in year one, I, I kind of would like for them to be eligible for COLA raises too. If the intent is that they're going to be with us for a longer period of time, multiple years over filling a position seasonally.
And again, sir, my thought was only, was the fact that if they'd made it three years, I assume they were doing a good enough job. So if we knew that, you know, right off the bat, we would never fire anybody or not rehire anybody. So that's my only thought to that, sir.
I, I, I think either way, it's, it's good to go forward. And I think it's a good consideration because we do have some really great talent that retires from state government and, and decides they want to come back and, and work with the city and provides us some skill level that we couldn't get otherwise. And we need to be a little competitive to retain that, that skill level. So thank you for developing that.
All right. Any other questions coming? Item number five, an update on community relief fund dispersment. I believe we, Steph sent that out to everyone today or recently? Questions on this? If I, if it's clear as I got.
Mayor. Mayor, I thought it was a great job done with the group, with Rebecca. And then, you know, they got out the first round of checks this past Friday, which was great. We approved this a few months ago. So, you know, it's, it, it's just excited that some of the businesses are receiving, like Eric said, some of this money now that's able to help them and hopefully we can do more as we go. But it's just good and feels positive for me and for those that I, business owners I've spoken with, that, you know, it's just exciting that they're now receiving the money. So I'm hoping that, you know, if we continue to do so, we'll continue to get that out a little bit quicker versus a couple of months out. But these business owners are ecstatic in receiving their money. And so I'm glad we, as a commissioner, agreed on that and pushed that forward and do hope that that will help them around the holiday season and as, as, as they're opening back up to 50% service. So thank you for all the hard staff that worked hard on this and getting that out. So thank you.
Commissioner Sauer?
Your mic, John.
Oh, Mike.
Yes, we want to do as much as we can for these small businesses. And I'm in total agreement and appreciate Commissioner Waldridge's comments. And I think we, as you look at the stats, every business except one, I believe, requested and got the $5,000. And we're working on others to make them whole. I don't think, I don't think we will reach 50 applicants or even the projected 60 applicants. Let's say we do. I would suggest that we do a round two immediately, as soon as possible. And it'd be based on a first come, first served basis. We did that in our neighborhood redevelopment grants that we had about three years ago. And I can remember people standing out in the rain wanting to get those neighborhood development grants. So I would do one, it'd be first, first come, first served. Essentially, we could use the same application, tweaking it just a little bit perhaps that we're using right now. So that shouldn't be a problem. We should assign the necessary staff. We should also, of course, get out the publicity far and wide, the best we can do through digital, through radio, through cable, cable 10. And I would also add this, members of the commission, that indeed they ought to be small businesses as defined by the federal government. And obviously in the city limits, but I would say owned by locals or owned by out-of-town people. I think that's important. That will also get us extra people to serve. You know, because here's the reason why. Those people that own business and they're out of town or neighboring communities, whatever, that weren't able to get any of these funds, they have employees too. They have employees who pay payroll taxes. That business pays taxes to the city as far as their annual assessment goes. They have licenses that they purchase from the city. And I think such a second round, you know, governed by, say, say $200,000 and based on a first come, first served, it could run into the next administration if we don't have that many. And I think that would well serve the small business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sauer. Commissioner Whisman?
Yeah, I think, Ms. Ross's email from earlier today indicated that we have expended all of our funds fully, our CARES funding. I had not been aware of that until that, that email. Is that, that's correct? Or do we still have some remaining from the 500,000 that we've obviously not used for the full number of applications that, that came in for the financial assistance business programs?
Yeah, I don't.
I'm sorry.
I wasn't, I, I read that. I meant to call to find out too. Thanks for bringing it up, Commissioner Whisman.
I don't believe we had enough people qualified to spend the whole $500,000.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Can I, could I make a recommendation, Mayor, to you all?
Well, I think that I, when I talk to you about the executive order to give the extra 5,000?
I, I think that would work. I think if we went and everybody that qualified for this original round of $5,000, we give them an extra, another $5,000.
That's what I.
Mr. Sauer?
I was going to add something on top of that.
Yeah. Yeah, on, on, on top of the original 5,000. Why, Tommy? Because a lot, you, it's, it's in print. It's, it's mathematical. Every one of those that applied, except one, as far as I know, and I talked with Ms. Boyd about this and I, I understand Ms. Hall has also cited, only one didn't request the full 5,000. That to me means that there's more hurt out there than just 5,000. So yes, everybody that applied before, you know, they need to show, as they did before, extra need in this case. And the only other difference would be first come, first served. Why? So we can get a lot of people in here in a hurry that is, that are showing need, just like we talked with Rosam. And that it be available to all businesses within the City of Frankfurt that are defined as small businesses.
Mayor, I was still asking you the question. I think Ms. Boyd probably has the answer from, from what I, I believe we had 50 businesses awarded $5,000, which would be half about 250,000 of the 500 that was set aside by executive order. Is that correct? We still have about 250,000 remaining, Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, I think that was in Ms. Hall's email to all of us earlier today. I want to say she's given out 46 checks to various businesses for 5,000. And I believe she has another eight or so that she expects to give more money to, or not more money to that first go around the 5,000 to. Rebecca just got on meeting. She probably can talk about that even better than I can. But yes, I want to say Rebecca, maybe 60 businesses that we're pretty sure in total will have, will get the 5,000. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes. And David Jones is working with the, the remaining businesses to try to get them qualified also. There's, there are just some outstanding taxes, fees, fines that, you know, we're, we're working with them to try to get those cleared. I don't know that all of them will be because some of them are from several years back, but I do anticipate some of them probably will be clear.
Mayor, I had a thought about a number of those issues, specifically the, the past taxes and fees. If we might not, you know, these, these businesses just need cash to stay alive at the moment. I know you and Mr. Russell are talking about executive order to expand and, and provide some additional assistance. I wonder if we might not provide a grace period for paying those taxes or even some partial forgiveness as part of the grant program somehow to get money out to these businesses. We are, frankly, we've drug our feet for too long already that right now is critical time for the next two weeks up till Christmas for most of these businesses. And then they all have a, you know, a slow period for three or four months until spring that, that I'm gravely concerned about how they're going to survive. Ms. Ross, I'm not sure if we could, we could expand upon it, but I thought, you know, if, if we could have a discussion about whether we need to set aside some general fund, funding in addition to the, the executive order that's been established already. If we've already spent our full CARES funding, like I've said, since I think April, I thought that we needed to put about $2 million aside to help small businesses and, and individuals. And I still feel that we need to, to provide some of that. And, and frankly, not just businesses. We have some nonprofits and some others in town that have not been able to, to hold their fundraisers, that they usually provide community assistance that are struggling as well. I, I'll just say the King Center by example, you know, not been able to have their annual fundraiser, some others that are struggling to pay their, their utilities and property insurance and things as well, that I think we need to think about how do we support them. And, and I agree with everything Mr. Sauer or Commissioner Sauer has said. But I, I wonder if we need to somehow appropriate another half million or something to this, this first reading that we had tonight for that effect.
Uh, city manager?
You know, I, I don't have a problem to give businesses more money, but for those businesses that haven't been paying us for five or six or seven years, you know, that, that probably, that raises an issue for me, to be honest with you all. And that, that would certainly have to be vetted. I, I think, you know, I don't want to, you know, when all the other businesses have been busting their tails to make it right and to pay their share, you know, Commissioner Whisman, and I think you would probably agree with me, sir, that we don't want to go back into somebody that has been not paying their fair share because they choose not to for six or seven years, sir.
And may I add to that, please? So Commissioner Whisman, the finance department with help from Rebecca, of course, she's the person who's gathered all the information from the various businesses. We have tried really hard to work with businesses that owe us money from previous years. And unfortunately, some of these businesses, it goes back quite a few years. Now, if it's, we're only talking about 2019 net profit tax and possibly, you know, the third quarter occupational tax. Those businesses have been great. They've come right in. They've paid. We've even had a couple that came in and paid their alcohol license fees as well. So really the businesses that we're talking about really truly owe us, you know, for multiple years and multiple amounts. Now, we've actually also had some businesses that have come in and paid multiple, multiple years and multiple amounts. And it could be occupational tax. It could be net profit tax. So just so you know, we have tried really hard to work with all the businesses that have submitted applications. And Rebecca could probably even speak to that even better than I could because she and David Jones have worked very closely together on that. We have tried really hard to help as many businesses as we can and worked with all the businesses that submitted an application and tried to help. So just so. So just so you-
Thank for clarifying, Ms. Boyd. That, that was more my intent, that I didn't want this year's or last year's taxes to, to hold up grant funding. You know, obviously, if it's, it's a continuing problem, that's a different circumstance, but that hadn't been clarified in any of the communications we've received yet. So I assumed that was the case, but I wanted to make sure that, that we weren't withholding grant funding because they were unable to pay the current year's employment tax or something.
And, and that has not been the case. And Rebecca, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we, but like I said, they've been, those businesses have come right in and paid and been great about it. So Rebecca can speak to that further.
Commissioner, Commissioner Walters, I'm not sure, I can't, your, your light's not real strong tonight, so you got the backlight behind you, so it's hard to see. Do you have your hand up?
Yes, yeah. I have my hand up, and, and I wanted to add, you know, it was actually a couple of comments ago, is, you know, I think it was about a month and a half ago when we were discussing the money for the cities, that Rebecca and I had a conversation in her office, and I had brought to the table some of our discussion, which was increasing it from 5 to $10,000 and also extending that deadline to the end of the year. So I think this is sort of a roundabout of bringing that back up. So I don't think it's a new idea to add $5,000 to this. I think it's just increasing, and, and I believe Rebecca, if I'm not mistaken Rebecca, that was our conversation about a month and a half ago, and we did bring it to the commission to try to increase that money for the businesses, for them to have up to $10,000 versus 5,000. Because at the time Rebecca had only a, I think it was about 15, if I'm not mistaken, applications at the time, because we wanted to make sure we were going to use that. Then once we had said that we were going to try to extend the deadline or maybe increase, that's when she received about 42 other applications. So I think increasing is a great idea. Once again, it was something I brought up after speaking with Rebecca. I think she had a good idea in, in pushing for. So I think that if we did that, I think that it would help a lot of our businesses. And, and as speaking with Rebecca within this past week, some of the businesses have been very gracious. They've been returning their emails. I know that we, they've been doing a lot of phone calls to them because we forgot emails, and they've been, so we truly appreciate all of you guys, you know, getting back to Rebecca and being easy to work with during this time up until the checks were printed. So I, I agree in, in increasing that for them if we can.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Tippett, and then we'll move on.
Mayor, thank you. I just think we should, we should direct the city manager and staff to make some sort of recommendation either to you or to the commission at large as to a, a proper disbursement for round two of small business relief. Now, if the mayor can do that through executive order, we should do it. If it needs to come back to us for a vote, we can, we should do that. But it's clear that the board wants to provide more liquidity into the community and for small business, micro-targeted for small business. So if the city manager wants and staff can come up with a recommendation that we can all agree to, that's what we should do, and we should move on with this discussion. Thank you.
Right, I think they clarified too. I think Commissioner Sauer was talking about additional, on top of the CARES funding and appropriation from our reserve account, I believe that's what Commissioner Wiseman was saying too. I don't want to put words in their mouth, but that's, that's what I understand. I think maybe Commissioner Tippett, you agree with that too?
Yeah, yes, but I, I just think that, you know, we, we're just batting this thing around, and it seems like we all agree in, in some form. It's just we need the, the staff to crystallize that for us. And if the mayor can release the funds in an executive order, you know, post ACE, do it. If it needs to come to us, let's get the three votes and move on. The, the point is, there's crying need, and we all recognize that need, so let's get those funds out there as fast as we can.
I think that's what, and that's what the staff, I think they, they heard loud and clear. All right, next, uh, thank you all. And so we can, till the end of the year, we can do as much, make changes as much as, as you all want. So we'll work with the city manager and staff immediately. Parks master plan update and the committee.
Mayor.
Who, who did I lose?
Mayor.
Commissioner Walters?
I know this, I know this is not part of the, the businesses or whatever, but I did receive some information saying that the Kentucky Housing Corporation is set to stay open another 24, for the next 24 hours, that there is home, Healthy Home Eviction Relief Fund that's opened up again today, and they will have funds available for another 24 hours for our community. So if people are watching this, they need help with eviction. I know it's not business related, but it is important for evictions for our community. Please reach out to the Kentucky Housing Corporation for the next 24 hours. They will have a few funds until there are any more for the next 24 hours.
Do you have a number, Catricia? A phone number?
Um, let's see here, I probably do. Not right off. I'll try to put it in the chat.
All right.
Um, related to that, Mayor, could I ask that Mr. Russell maybe make some comprehensive or direct staff to make some comprehensive updates on our social media of resources that are available? There's the Healthy Home Fund, there's some public assistance for utilities, Rosam, obviously. I think we need to do a, a little concerted effort right now to push that out a little bit more because there are people that think that particularly that, that one national fund has already been used up or the deadline's passed, and that's not quite the, the case. But there are a couple of weeks here of additional assistance, and I, I think we need to be proactive at putting that out. Thanks.
All right, thank you. This past week, we had an update on the Park Master Plan Steering Committee. We had had a really good report, I believe. I didn't check my email, there were, Mr. Pickens may know, but the architecture firm was going to send out the reported commission, I don't know if the commissioners all got a copy of it or not. With my understanding, they, it was going to go out.
It was sent out this afternoon, I think, Mayor.
Okay, because I was going to say, I hadn't seen it beforehand, and this afternoon it was tied up. I was good, and, and Mr. Pickens is on, and we appreciate his work. He's working tirelessly to help get that updated. I know he's excited about him, can speak for himself, but I can, I can tell you, we're all excited about those results. I think for me, one of the, one of the interesting things was, we were talking about stage earlier, and the one thing that got the highest score of anything, that 200 out of 200, was more arts, more concerts and, and arts events. And that's, that's exactly why we brought the stage. I was looking back and see, we did vote, the commission voted on that upgrade on the stage from the 125 to 153 something. So I believe, I believe that was unanimous, five to zero vote. I can't find the minutes, I know our city clerk will find the minute. That, did you, I'm sorry, the city clerk's checking, did you find that? Oh, I thought you, maybe you were looking too. I was, I was looking through the email to, to see that. I believe I remember it being a five to zero vote when we brought up the additional revenue because it included the hydraulic leveling system, some other things that staff said that we should probably get on there. So that was a fully debated, not debated, but discussed issue. So I'm sure that staff can go back and, and find the invoice and, and get all that. I looked at it, and it said 153, but we'll, we'll get that. But again, that was one of the visions that we had for the community for over, for the last three to four years, trying to make downtown Anoxan Entertainment District and have more events and have a portable stage that we could move to from park to park or neighborhood to neighborhood. And I think in this report that we saw, one of the number one things was an amphitheater. And I know Commissioner Wiseman discussed that a little bit, but again, it's exciting to see that, that our vision, we were, we were, we were going in the right direction because that survey was done, I'll, you know, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Pickens, I'm kind of taking his, his, his thunder away. Sorry for that.
Oh, no, no, not taking any thunder. Yeah, they, like I said, they did an exhaustive community outreach and talked to more than average, even, even before COVID-19, when they're doing master plans in other communities, they have an average number of people that they typically talk to and ha, and have at meetings, in-person meetings. They actually talked to more than, more than average amount of people during COVID than they did pre-COVID when they normally do. So they had a good number of turnout and spoke to a lot of, a lot of community members. So, and as the mayor mentioned, that outdoor concerts and, and art performances and those type things were real, number one on the list of things that they were looking for. So I will send, I know I sent it to the steering committee today for the master plan. I'll send you the, the entire commission. I'll send that out to you either tonight or first thing in the morning. You know, the results of that survey, the results of the public input that they, that Brain Center Carroll received, and then just some other, there's a bunch of information, where they're at so far in the master plan, and it would just be easy just for me to send you that information, and then if you have questions about it, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiseman?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. First, I just want to thank this commission for supporting me and my, my goal that I had from the very beginning of, of my term to do a, a brand new comprehensive master park plan. You know, it's difficult for a city commission to impact things like housing developments and business development to, to a great degree, but one of the things that we have complete control over are our parks and their ability to attract new families to our community and business to our community and to create a, a higher quality of life for everyone. And often, you know, we confuse parks that they're just sporting venues. But I think the, the results that we've seen have shown very greatly for how Frankfurt's park system is, excels in many ways and can be made so much better. You know, the, the analysis took a, a survey of, of all of our parkland per population, and we're well ahead of most other communities, particularly the consultants have ever worked with. And COVID has given us a bit of a unique circumstance where we've had a more captive audience to have input than ever before. So it, in a way, it, it turned out in more positive than we could have imagined perhaps. Just want to say that there were over 1,060 interactions, interviews so far, that more than doubles, I believe, what Brain Center Carroll had when they did this for us almost 20 years ago. And there's still time through the end of the year for everyone to have input. If you've not yet got to provide input to the park plan, you can go to the City Frankfurt Parks and Recreation's website, and there's a direct link off there to fill out an online survey. The results were quite eye-opening. You know, I think there were three areas, unmet program needs, most important programs, and priorities for program investment that were identified. The top need per those thousand-plus interviews was for concerts and art performances in our community, followed by movies outdoors and wellness and fitness programs, particularly for adults and over 65. Really kind of eye-opening, I think, that, that the community, even before we had a discussion, I believe, or maybe in tandem with our discussion about purchasing the stage, I think we felt the pulse of the community and, and seeing what potential there was to, to add programmatic elements in our, our parks. And I'm very excited about what that's going to mean for our community in the future. More than 30% of the respondents so far out of those thousand-plus interviews want concerts and art performances in our, our park systems. So well beyond the organized sporting events and things we have, and those are followed quite a lot by things like adding trail amenities. And one majorly overarching theme was better access to the river and use of the, the water way through our city. So it's, it's been a eye-opening experience to participate in this, this park planning process. I would encourage everyone that has not yet had an opportunity to, to provide input to do that. And let us see exactly, let the commission in the future see what the citizens want out of our park system in this community. And, you know, one of our jewels that's came to, to the forefront is Cove Springs Park. There was a tremendous amount of folks that have responded that say they use the, you know, the park system daily, weekly, monthly, much more than, than the national average that our consultants were telling us. And Cove Spring is one of the, the major attractions. So adding some, some amenities and some interpretation and some things that we've talked about there are going to be really important in the future. So it's been a, a nice process, and I just would ask again that the community let us hear what you want, because this is, this is going to inform the next 20 years of our, our future in our community.
Thank you, Walter. Any other questions or comments? All right, next item.
And we have the comment on the committee portion. So as of right now, we have a city commissioner that is sitting on that particular Parks Plan Committee, and we need to replace that commissioner as he will be leaving us at the end of the year. And so we need to go ahead and make that in case there's other meetings that will be coming up, because we have a couple of committees that will be happening for, I think we also have a meeting, I think, coming up for a planning committee on the 16th.
Mayor, why would we, we, as a sitting body, make that decision before the new commission comes in? We might make a different decision.
Again, all it would be is removing you because you're finished at the end of your term is finished at December 31st, and then when the new commission comes in, if they then want to replace, then they will have someone, but we need to move forward. This was discussed months ago when this all was occurring. I, I think I even spoke gently about it, that this would probably occur, and of course, it was in a different voting. It, it needs to take place so that someone is sitting there. I've already spoke with the mayor-elect. I've spoke with some of the elect commissioners as well, and if they choose to revoke, we will revoke as a commission and not someone in, in this commission. It will be with the new commission coming in if we choose to change that.
Mayor, can I ask for a clarification? Because we gave you the authority to establish the committee as it was. Obviously, you know, this was something I really felt strongly about creating. Commissioner Walters has tried to, to take credit for it several times, but it was-
Good try.
Not that. I believe you named me by name as a citizen or commissioner in general to be on this committee and to continue on this committee, is my hope. Is that not correct? Instead of just as a commissioner, because we lost the mayor to serve on this committee as well as the position for the, the city?
Yeah, um, I'd have to go back on review, but I think we, my suggestion was that you be on it because it was your proposal to do a Parks Master Plan and, and so as with in the past, if someone's leading an effort, we try to keep that person, or not try to keep it, but, but we'd keep that person involved from that perspective. I guess if, if, if the new commission wants to make changes, they certainly can.
Hmm, that's fine. We, we can make changes as a new commission coming in. This is not Eric Wiseman's baby. This is discussion that we had. I know he continues, if that's the case, he has done it. No, he has actually just said that, and I have a right to counter that. And with Ms. Laura, Ms. Ross, is there, is there-
Walters?
Legally?
If you can't follow the rules, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry?
You need to follow the rules, please. I told you, I ruled you that you need to be respectful. Your comments directing are, are in a more of a personal nature because you called Commissioner Wiseman by name, and that is-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wiseman.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Laura, before I was, had to go through that. Is, is there a such thing as a commissioner? Because I thought I was told at one time, once you're commissioner, there's no, you, you are not seen as a citizen. You are seen as a commissioner in all of your rounds. I, I know there was several times that I would like to attend a meeting because there was three of us, and I wanted to then show up as just Catricia as a resident. Why is it now that this lame duck commission now with these two going on can say, oh, I did you as a citizen? We are considered officials before we are citizens, correct?
Sorry about that. For purposes of, of committees and meetings, it is true that when three of you all are present at a meeting, it can, it can cause issues, which is why we always ask the one who is not sitting as a commissioner on a particular committee to avoid participation. who is not sitting as a commissioner on a particular committee to avoid participation.
That is correct. And that's, yes. And so that would mean that Mr. Commissioner Whitman is sitting on the Parks Committee as a commissioner, as I received an email that I should not speak during that committee when I sat on that committee the other day during that meeting. I received a letter from, I believe it was you, maybe Tommy and, and Mr. Pickens, saying I should not say anything during that meeting because we have a city commissioner sitting as well as the mayor sitting on that. Is that not correct?
That's correct, yes. That's why we did not, we didn't want to risk there being a quorum.
Thank you. And so as I stated before, before we had to go ring around the rosies, it is a commissioner's seat, and I just wanted to bring that up, as we stated months ago, that this would probably happen in this time. And that's why it's brought up on the committee, that it needs to be a sitting commissioner that will move on to the next commission. And once the next commission gets in, if we so choose to switch over from my being a city commission, we can then do that.
Any other comment?
Mayor, just to, to say that I will continue to work until the last day of my office, and, and I'm not leaving this community. I'll continue to, to serve as a citizen role in, in many ways. And I would just hope that Commissioner Waldridge and the entire, the, the commission elect will, will try to be responsible and cordial in their interactions with, with those that try to serve this community. And, you know, I think this is a discussion for the, for the next commission. And if Commissioner Waldridge can potentially have a favor with, with a full body to have her way, she can take this up with them.
I'll be present on the rest of the parks meeting, and I will be able to speak then. Thank you.
As are any, any citizens are more than welcome to, to attend these public meetings. These are public meetings that are noticed, noticed. All right, next item. And Ms. Pickens, thank you and your staff for all the work you've done on the update. And again, thank you, Commissioner Whitman, for bringing that to the table. Uh, next item is board and commission annual work plan.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can, I asked for this to be, to be added. You know, for the last two years, I had requested of, of our boards and of our city manager to, to create a better cohesion or better synergy between the, the bodies. And unfortunately, yet to date, we've never once had a presentation except for funding requests by, by some of the bodies like DFI, KCDC, and otherwise. I just thought it important to, to take this opportunity to ask those bodies that meet and are tasked with creating annual work plans, agendas, to create something here this month in their, their last meeting to present to the new commission, specifically those bodies that are tasked with creating work plans and/or carrying out activities in the city and/or receive some funding from, from the city. The Architecture Review Board has been tasked, in part of their bylaws, with creating an annual work plan, but yet that's never been presented to the commission before. I believe the Tree Board, sort of the same thing. Capital Development Corporation. You know, there's, there's numerous organizations working for the betterment of this community, but I don't see the cross-pollination, if you will, between these bodies and the commission and those that are carrying out the activities as it needs to be. We've, like I said, we've never had a presentation, even though I've asked every year by these bodies. And specifically, KCDC and DFI are both quasi-governmental entities that receive $115,000 from the city for KCDC and $65,000 a year annually for DFI that I would like to see bring forward and have a discussion with the commission. I've never once been reached out by either the directors of, of either of those two entities. But I think it's important. We have too much work going on in silos and, and trying to be irrespective of, of other organizations and protective, if you will, that, that we need better synergy between all bodies. And I would just ask that, I don't know that we can direct officially any of our, our boards, but those two that do get some funding and perhaps all the rest to get funding. We had this discussion back in 2019, I believe, when we changed slightly a, a document that all of the entities receiving city funding would have to guarantee that those funds were used in, used in a public purpose in some manner. But there's not been a lot of follow-up either to prove that they were audit statements or, or otherwise, that I think is important for there to be better communication between all these bodies. So I wanted to formally ask that, that those entities receiving funding from the city that are external to the operating of the city and any boards, although we can't formally direct the boards to present those, but just to request that they bring those, those work plans, those goals and priorities to the commission for a formal presentation to the next commission and have a, a better dialogue to, to connecting and moving the city forward than, than what has happened in the past. You know, I think coming out of, of this pandemic, there's going to be a need for some reorganization and refocusing of our community. And I think it's going to be incredibly important for there to be good dialogue and, and less repetition of services and, and perhaps a full reorganization of, of our funding structure. So I think to be relevant and continue on that all of these bodies are going to have to show their, their relevance and their, their need in the community to the next body. So I thought that was important to say before we, we head out, that the new commission is, is aware of, of funding and of, of these bodies, that, that work independently and, and what their working relationship has been, at least in my experience, with the commission. So I don't know if we can formally direct. I don't know if Ms. Ross can speak to any ability to formally direct something to come forward to the, the commission's work plans. If we can make a, a directive, I know we cannot for our boards and commission, and commissions, but perhaps the, those that receive funding.
City attorney? And then Commissioner Sauer, after Commissioner Whitman?
Sure, we can. You're right, Commissioner, that we cannot direct these boards and, you know, certain officers. We don't have the ability to direct them to take action. But we can look into our funding requirements and see if that might be a condition that we could add to the funding requests. So we'll take a look at that and see what we can do to shore that up.
Thank you.
Yeah, further, Commissioner?
I think John has frozen up for a second.
All right.
Hello? Yeah, I'm trying to reconnect my camera. I was just going, I was just going to say, I think that's a wonderful, a wonderful idea that Commissioner Whitman had. I'm sure this new mission is going to have goal-setting sessions and to hear reports of the different boards, agencies, committees, especially that the city already has, and our department heads have oversight too. So all of those would be beneficial to the new commission.
Are there any further? All right, next item, Frankfurt Park Historic Markers.
The ad hoc committee, Mayor. Before that, you skipped one.
Heritage Commission Ad-Hoc Committee.
Mayor, if I may?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I ask that we add this discussion item in light of our recent directives to ask staff to apply for a CLG grant to complete a, some planning for historic preservation and in light of hiring a new preservation officer for the city and in light of, of many, many projects that have impacted historic resources around our community over the last year. I thought it was important to have a discussion about creating an ad hoc committee that would focus on heritage preservation and the needs of, of our community in those terms on a broader scale than what our Architecture Review Board is tasked with doing. So I thought I would bring it to us to discuss tonight and, and make a motion to, to establish a committee that would be tasked with primarily helping to develop a, a master plan, if you will, a comprehensive plan about preservation of historic resources in our community as well as any policy decisions or, or policy recommendations that, that may come up, that that body, that body might make to the commission as, as part of that planning process. We've had a, a lot of interest in a lot of these objects and our, our parks specifically is referenced in the planning process we've already been going through. We have a comprehensive plan for our entire community that a subsection is going to be preservation. And of course, we have a new preservation officer in process that is, that is going to need some directive as well. So I'd like to move that we create a new Heritage Preservation Commission Ad-Hoc Committee and allow the mayor to establish the members of that committee to begin this, this work.
Okay, you put that, okay, there's a motion. Is there?
If we might have a second, we could have discussion.
We need to get a second.
A second for purposes of discussion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Sauer. Okay, Commissioner Sauer, did you have discussion or you just seconded it for discussion? I just wanted to clarify.
John froze up again.
No, he's good. All right.
I just, I just think in, in general, it's a very good idea that this more or less advisory committee be established to plat our future regarding historic preservation. I think that's a good thing. Doesn't have to be a big committee, you know, can be once a month or whatever, as we shake out the specifics of the idea. So that's what I have to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, any other?
Mayor, technical question?
Commissioner Whitman?
Uh, just a technical question for Ms. Ross to verify, maybe here for the public. Any ad hoc committee created by the city would undergo the same open records, open meetings policy as, as the city. So this would be a, an open process with citizens allowed to participate in, in whatever committee is created to inform or fully inform a, what I feel has been sort of a, a lacking focus of, of where do we go and what is our end goal for preservation of, of our historic resources, not only our buildings and structures, but our landscapes, our parks, et cetera, into the future. And, and this committee could be made up more broadly than the technical expertise that's mandatory as part of our Architecture Review Board, as well as focus on some things that aren't maybe necessarily traditional preservation-like aspects of interpretation that our museum body and board might be involved in as well. But, excuse me, that, that would be correct, Ms. Ross, that, that they are subject to all the same notifications and meeting records, open records requirements. Thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Tippett?
You know, ad hoc means pretty informal. You know, and while I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed, I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to a committee. I just don't know this deep into the term, and I'm thinking about transitioning to the next commission, how we have some connectivity there. We would certainly want buy-in from the next commission on any ad hoc committee this close to the end of the term. And I don't know how we go about doing that, but I think it's something we should consider. So I guess I'm trying to say is I'm not, I'm not really opposed to it. I just, the logistics of it leave me with some concerns. If you can address those, those concerns, Mayor, I'd appreciate it. If you can't, that's okay, too.
Okay, so I, I don't have any details. So I would refer to Commissioner Whitman on that, what, what his thought was to make up and what their charge is.
Yeah, Mayor, I, you know, I thought of, of this, and I, I have already spoken to Commissioner or Mayor-elect about this. And, and part of my motion was to allow you to establish the committee and ideally in consultation with, with Lane Wilkerson. And obviously, as an ad hoc committee, members can be added at any point in time. If we come up with a core group that can go ahead and establish a, a meeting date for the first of the year, the next commission can change, add members, whatever they like. And I just wanted to go ahead and get that established and, and functioning before the end of the year. And obviously, there's, there's a couple of weeks left that it'll be informed by the next commission, but I thought it important to, to establish the committee first.
Okay, Commissioner Tippett? I'm sorry, did it?
Yes, I'm sorry. Did you miss ever hand up?
I wasn't sure.
Okay, you were first. I just, did Commissioner Waldridge ever hand up?
I think.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think so. Sorry.
Okay.
I think you first went up, but I'll, I'll go. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Tippett. I was just stating that, you know, this ad, I didn't get any, really any information in my box with this particular ad hoc committee to know what this is. And I think that this sort of goes back to, you know, our discussion in six in regards to changing because of the new commission coming in. If we can't, in this body, change a commissioner who is going out to a commissioner who is going to be stagnant for another two years on the commission, why would we create an ad hoc committee for a new commission coming in? Wouldn't we be able to save that for the commission if they so choose that an ad hoc committee should be established? I, I just think that we're doing apples and apples here. And I think if you can't change someone on a committee, I don't think we should be in an instance where we should be creating a, definitely a committee for the new commission coming in. So just my, my opinion on it.
Commissioner Tippett?
Uh, could, Mayor, could we stipulate that any, any ad hoc committee could not be formed until you were able to have some sort of consultation with the incoming mayor-elect? I just think that would be appropriate.
I think you can direct that.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, I mean, that's how I can vote for it, okay? I can't, honestly, I can't vote for it unless that provision is in the motion, okay?
Is that a motion to amend, Mr. Tippett?
Uh, if, if, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of relying on the mayor here for his parliamentary expertise.
You may amend that. I don't.
Well, I'd like, you know, it's either we amend it or I have to vote against it, so.
If that's an amendment, Commissioner Tippett, I will second.
Okay, I make a motion that we stipulate that the mayor-elect should consult with the current mayor as to the, how the ad hoc committee is comprised. That'll be my, that'll, that's my motion to amend the motion.
And I'll second. And I think that is important. There needs to be buy-in and, and information and, and next commission. I just think it's important to.
Sorry, Commissioner.
Sorry, Mayor, I can't, I can't, I can hardly hear you.
But it does make it difficult with not being in person. I think, too, what I was going to clarify, I don't have any guidelines on, on what the number of people or the charge, that's what I'm saying. I think that we can flesh this out in the future. We can, we can certainly establish that we want to do this. I don't think we can, we can't direct the mayor-elect, but you can direct me as mayor to have consultation with the mayor-elect, not the other way around. This is the technical correction there.
That's fine, that's fine, Mayor. And I stand corrected, and we'll put the technical correction in the amendment, okay? Is that right? Well, we can direct the mayor, we will, we will direct the mayor to consult with the mayor-elect. Is that the proper wording?
Yes, that's much cleaner. So I'm not sure how the city clerk recorded that first motion. Would, would she please, city clerk, would you read to me? I think I, I'm pretty sure I know what it is, and I think I'm going to have to fix it.
Is that the amendment?
Yes, made by Commissioner Tippett. Yes, made by Commissioner Tippett, seconded by Commissioner.
I changed with the technical with what you just said, the mayor would consult with the mayor-elect to form the ad hoc committee.
I think that's a clarifying correction that I don't think we need to take any further action. They prefer to ask the city attorney for her thoughts on that, please. Just cleaning it up like that.
I think we can do that, Mayor, that was, yes.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion and a, an amendment.
Question on the motion.
All right, I could do a voice vote because it's just easier for us to just do a quick roll call on the amendment, please.
Mayor, I think Mr. Sauer had a question on the motion or amendment.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Sauer.
No, I was just calling for question on the motion to go ahead and vote.
That's what I thought.
Misunderstood.
All right.
Mayor, we're, we're voting on the, we're voting on the motion as amended.
We're voting on the amendment.
Okay, okay.
Yes, this is.
Yeah.
All right, court, please call.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Absolutely not, this needs to wait to the new commission, it can wait a few more, this is absolutely in turn, but again, it just goes to our leadership that we have, so ready for the new commission to come in in January.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, the most amendment is adopted to the motion now, the main question for the body would be the establishment of a Heritage Commission Ad Hoc Committee as amended.
Call for question on the motion as amended.
Okay. Court, please call the roll on the motion as amended, please.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Absolutely no.
Mr. Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman.
Yes, and I will say that, you know.
Explain your vote, you explain your vote.
The expertise, Mayor, if I can explain my vote, the expertise and the the commitment by the current body should not be discounted by the future commission or any member here, and we have the experience, the ability to identify issues in our community that we're supposed to serve until the last day of our task. And frankly, we have a a brand new commission coming in that that has no experience except for one who has questionable experience that I think is important for us to help direct the.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm sorry, your sidekick over there is actually speaking out of turn.
I just said that, and Commissioner, I'm gonna have to rule you out of order, too, because don't refer to someone as a sidekick. So Commissioner Wiseman, please.
Well, I mean, it's.
Explain your vote.
Noted, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, and let me say this, too, as was said, commission terms are for two years, not one year and 364 days there for a full year, sorry, for two, four years. And I appreciate the fact that the commission wants to put this out there, and of course, the new commission coming in can completely abolish and redo it, if that's what, if that's what they want to do, and they can, they can certainly do that if they choose to. But I think it's important for us, with our knowledge and expertise, that we we do what we think we need to do to to help get things aligned. We do have a fiduciary duty, and I think that we've made a commitment that we will do that. All right, next item is number nine, Frankfurt Park Historic Markers.
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this has been a bit of a partnership discussion with Commissioner Sauer that initially had brought this up at one of our meetings, and I thought I would take it a little further. So for a little while, I've been working to identify places that the Kentucky Historic Roadside Markers could be placed and realizing that for all of our park systems, we really don't have anything that interprets or or says why they are named what they are or what they exist there for. So rather than creating something new, I thought the most logical thing, as Commissioner Sauer has directed before, would be to place some of these historic roadside markers in our Parks Department. Specifically, I'd like us to look at placing one at Hayden Station at Capital View Park and interpreting that historic site that was was really frankly just destroyed for for the football field that's there, laying underneath of that. As we've been discussing several times lately, the Cove Springs Water Works and interpreting what Cove Springs really was initially to our community, we're going to have some further research, hopefully through granting process, if the CLG program gives us that okay to put that on the National Register. Fort Hill for all of its history, and we do have interpretive signs there, but we don't have any state accolades like this. And as well as our downtown and the city of Frankfurt in general, we have some things naming, you know, that the city was named capital of Kentucky, but we don't have anything really about our formation and the the founders, you know, Trader General Wilkinson and otherwise. So I wanted to to bring that up, to ask that those four historic markers might be developed by our Parks Director in collaboration with our museum staff to create the language over over the next, you know, many, many months and installed at our Parks Departments. So before I make a motion, maybe if there's any other discussion on that, but I would like to come back and make a motion to to acquire those.
Commissioner, I need for clarification, are these the same as the, that the state puts up the highway markers?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone's seen the the green and gold state roadside historic markers, and there is a database of those, you know, that the Kentucky Historical Society maintains, rather than us putting up individual plaques that we could do on our own, this has a better access for the broader spectrum of the states when they come, you know, to look those up through apps or websites to read those outs external to their visit to Frankfurt, and then ideally help pull people maybe that are interested in those arenas into those parks and those spaces specifically because of that history. I think we get a little bit more for our money than if our Parks Department were to just put up some type of marker on their own.
Do I have a discussion or question?
I'll, I'll move to make a motion then, Mayor. I'd like to direct staff to purchase and install four historic markers, four of the Kentucky roadside historic markers, one for Hayden Station at Capital View Park, one for the Water Works at Cove Springs Park, one for Fort Hill and the general history of of the hillside, inclusive of the Civil War at Leslie Morse Park, and one for downtown that discusses the founders of our city, the names of our streets grid, and might even include a plat of our our city and and that yet to be defined, to be placed somewhere in downtown. And to make the appropriate budget amendments when necessary to acquire those those plaques.
Second.
Okay, motion back Commissioner Wiseman, second back Commissioner Sauer. One clarification, just for the city clerk, can you spell Hayden, how they spell that, please? Do we know, we can find that.
Do I know how to spell it?
No, 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 I'm saying just trying to figure, because it makes sure we get that since it's an actual name of a somewhere.
Mayor. Director Pickens, I'd be recognized.
Okay.
Mayor, I think, I believe it's H A Y D E N, but I I'm not positive of that, we probably should ask park staff to to verify.
Make sure, okay. Ms. Pickens, do you have some helpful comment?
Yeah, just real briefly, I believe it is H A Y D E N, but I'll double check on that. I had checked in with the Historical Society about a month or so ago to start working on the process of a historic marker for Hayden Station and then then some other ones. They've currently put their program on hold because of COVID, so we'll have to wait till COVID releases and they start that program back up, so whenever that would be, but once that does, we'll definitely, you know, we can work with the the museum staff as well as probably the new preservation officer coming on could probably assist with that as well, so that's all I wanted to add.
All right, very good, thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Wilson.
Mr. Pickens, I realize that it, I knew that it was on hold and that it might take six months or more. Ideally, particularly the Cove Springs one would be informed by the National Register process, and so this isn't an immediate process, I would hope by the end of maybe next year that they could be installed, but there's going to be some some timely development of the the language that gets put on those plaques before they're ever cast officially, and I would hope that, you know, we'll, we'll have many eyes on those drafting that language carefully. There's only so many characters you can, you can place on those. So I I realize that it will probably be a lengthy process to establish all of these, but I I thought we'd go ahead and start the process.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Now, we had a motion back Commissioner Wilson, second back Commissioner Sauer. Mr. Clark, do you please call the roll?
Commissioner Waldrich.
I vote no, I just know that I'm sure that the staff will be able to work on something. I know they're looking forward to 2021 as well, and the staff's just ready for a new commission, so I'm gonna vote no and let them handle it. Thank you.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman.
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, that's adopted, and so we'll, we'll get staff to work on that and have it in place for when the program opens back up. All right, next item would be discussion of tentative agenda. Anyone have any questions about the December 21st agenda?
Not as it's presented, Mayor, I think it's fine so far.
All right, next item.
Mayor.
Commissioner.
Of course, I, I don't have that in front of me, but I assume that we would place the idea of a second round of of small business support on that agenda. Certainly, a week would give us enough time for Tommy, the finance director, et cetera, Ms. Hall, to get together, fresh that out.
And I believe you're talking about in addition to the extra five that we were going to do on the executive order, right?
Yes, sir.
It's funny to clarify, because staff is asking about, that was, that was a question that's, I believe Commissioner Sauer's intention was on top of.
Correct.
Okay, wanted to double, to clarify that. Thank you. All right. Looks like I know one thing. All right, next item then would be the executive session.
Mayor, I'll move that we go into executive session per KRS 61 dot eight ten subsection one subsection C litigation, discussion of pending litigation regarding the old YMCA building.
All right, motion back Commissioner Wilson.
Second.
Next, Commissioner Sauer. Any discussion? The man, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Yes.
Mr. Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, so we'll let the staff shut down, close up. Motion, entertaining motion to adjourn. Commissioner Wilson, second, I'm not sure who seconded it.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Waldrich, any discussion? The man, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman.
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Thank you all.